Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco's Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of city government. At meetings, the council, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-gov/agenda. And they can also be found at the back of the room. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, may I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Here.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protan Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present. Thank you, and would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you for that, and we will move on with our next item. Item four, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by city council and will be enacted by rule call vote as one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion on these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes for August 15 and August 22. Item B, Bills and Communications Approved Claims to the Total Amount of $6,677,572.13. Item C, Resolution Number 4232 Setting Public Hearing for Tri-City's Animal Shelter Right-of-Way Vacation. Item D, Resolution Number 4233 Process Water Reuse Facility Work Acceleration Agreement with Burnham SEV. Item E, Resolution Number 4234 Amendment to I-182 Broadmoor Interchange Improvement Contract with DKS for Final Design. And Item F, Resolutions Number 4235 to 4240 Approving Six Project Acceptance to Burns Road Pathway, Phase 1 through 3, North Road 92, 93, Power Line Pathway, Maple Drive Water Main and signage, and Stripping Burden Boulevard Projects.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Thank you for that. We have the motion by Mayor Protan Maloney and seconded by Councilman Campos. And can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Campos.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Milne.
Yes.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Mayor Protan Maloney.
Yes.
And Mayor Barajas.
Yes. And it passes unanimously, thank you for that. Moving on to item five, Proclamations and Acknowledgements, None Listed. Item six on the agenda, Visitors Other Than Agenda Items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide immediate response. I apologize, I take that back. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize our comments and/or submit written information. And with that, I open it to anyone from the chambers. If you wish to speak, please address the council at the podium by stating your name and an address. Actually, you turned it off.
Thank you. I am Suzanne Yala with Chow Trotteria, 112 North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. And I just actually wanted to come up here and say thank you to the City of Pasco for their support in getting my event together. Ari is in the alley that's coming up this Friday. Specifically Director Worley for jumping on getting the alley sanitized and cleaned and ready for the event. And Davis Bell, who was helping facilitate getting the lighting in place for this event. And just everybody at the city has been super supportive. And I wanted to thank you all for that. And we're really excited about getting this event going and offering some culture to downtown Pasco, food, wine, art, and music. So thank you very much for your support.
Good evening, I'm Erica Toronto, 1311 North Beach Avenue in Pasco. And I have two questions tonight. First of all, can you give me a list of trash service providers in Pasco? Is that something that someone can answer for me right now? Trash service providers? Okay, we'll get back to you. That's okay. And the second question is maybe for any lawyers in the bunch. Which takes precedence, codes or laws, generally speaking?
And if you'd like to provide an email, our clerk would be happy to send you that information.
Okay, do, just right now?
If you have it in writing or.
Okay, I'll give it to you in writing. Well, the reason I ask those questions is because I've been cited by the City of Pasco Code Enforcement Division for failure to have active garbage service. And I will be going before the Code Enforcement Board next month. Based on my research, I've found only one trash service provider in Pasco is BDI. My understanding of the law, I am not a lawyer, is that RCWs would take precedence over municipal codes. So what I found is that the government, the City of Pasco, is requiring me, a private citizen, to pay a private company, BDI, for a service that the government is requiring me to have. According to RCW 19.86.040 entitled "Monopolies and Attempted Monopolies Declared Unlawful", it says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to monopolize or attempt to monopolize or combine or conspire with any other person or persons to monopolize any part of trade or commerce." So I'm, I will be going before the Code Enforcement Board, but they did say that if I had an issue with the actual code itself, I needed to bring it to the city council because you are the guys that determine which codes we have. So if there's only one option provided in Pasco for trash service, meaning I can't take care of my own trash. In my family, we have basically 90% of our trash is recyclable. And we use the bins that are provided by our taxpayer money, provided by you, the city, by, through BDI, for recyclables. So 90% of my trash goes into the recycling bins. So that leaves me with a very small amount of trash that I'm able to manage. So to require me to pay money on a monthly basis to a company that is endorsed or, what's the word, I don't know, by the city, it just seems like it's not a fair practice. And I wanted to bring that to your attention. And I hope that you will look into it, and I will provide an email address. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else have any comments or wish to address council?
Hello, my name is Leonardo Morales. I'm a resident of Pasco, 1016 Beach Avenue. And I've just come here to say thank you. Thank you to all you guys and LBA. Because thanks to you guys and thanks to LBA, my business was close. And for people that here, they don't know what LBA means, it means Latin Business Association. I'm a Latin person. I guess tipsy is Latin. But we refuse to pay LBA a monthly fee. They charge businesses a monthly fee to help us. But when you refuse to pay that money, they come to the City of Pasco, and the City of Pasco enerves them to, because what they do is they start sending emails to this gentleman here. And then the emails become like, hey, Havana Cafe, tipsy, they do this a lot. And the City of Pasco does. They say, "Call enforcement", and they find me, they do everything. So the only reason I'm here is to thank you guys. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. I finally can put the page over and I deal with the cartel. You guys and LBA is a cartel. Because if you gotta pay someone to be able to have a business in downtown Pasco, that's a cartel to me. I'm not scared of anybody. And you guys, it looks like right now, they're trying to do a marijuana place in downtown Pasco. And LBA now is refusing to allow it. And I guarantee it, that's why I came here. I guarantee the marijuana thing is not gonna pass. Because you guys are gonna enable, David Coutina, his name is David Coutina, by the way, to not do that thing. And this needs to stop. You guys have a cartels, and you guys sell that cartel to work in the City of Pasco. Why you guys allow somebody to charge a monthly fee to help a business? And then if you refuse to pay the fee, the City of Pasco helps these cartel people to close those businesses. I am part of that. Havana Cafe was there for three years. And the first two years, we profited, we did well until LBA come to my restaurant and said, "We're gonna charge you this month a month." I said, "No, I'm not giving you a penny." The City of Pasco closed my business. You guys closed my business. I don't wanna put that in the record. You guys, Troy, and you guys enabled David Coutina to close my business. And congratulations, I did close my business. I'm moving on. My next business adventure is gonna be in Kennewick. And I hope Kennewick doesn't do what Pasco does. Thank you. And again, thank you so much for helping LBA to close my business. Thank you.
Gentleman back here, there you go.
Good evening, my name is Dwight Hans. My address is 3508 West Irving Street, Pasco, Washington, 99301. Opposition and concerns to the rezoning of land in River Haven neighborhood. Proposed amendment to the City of Pasco Development Plan and Future Land Use Map for 2018 through 2038 aims to add land south of 34th and located in the River Haven neighborhood to be rezoned from low-density residential to high-density residential. The reason for the proposed changes is to build a four-story apartment complex along the river in the lands just west of the Moore Mansion. Residents of River Haven.
Sir, are your comments regarding to something that's further down on the agenda?
Yes.
Do you want to reserve your comments for that time?
I would actually like to say them now, if that's possible.
Okay.
For the consideration. So how will increases in the density and population resulting from density residential development affect existing rates of property crime in this jurisdiction, River Haven? What plans are in place to handle increases in traffic and congestion and pedestrians? What impacts will this have on existing home values in the area? And according to the Federal Bureau of Investigation Online Crime Data Explorer, which measures annual crime rates in the United States and indicates that as of 2020, there are 21.09, or 21.09.9 property crimes, with Washington ranking 27.34, number five in the nation in property crimes. Pasco has, the US Census Bureau says that Pasco has a population of around 80,000 as of 2022 with annual growth rate of 2.20%, which equals out to about 1,700 new residents on average yearly. Meaning it is statistically significant that an increase in density will result in the proclivity for an increase in property crimes in the area that is higher than normal rate of property crimes for the entire city as a result of more people being included in less space. The City of Pasco hasn't provided any sufficient details on how to propose amendment and rezoning will deal with the increases in traffic and congestion resulting from a high-density building that is currently proposed to be built on a dead-end street. It is proven that increases in property crime, which Washington already ranks as one of the highest, does affect.
If you could please wrap up your comments.
Does have a negative effect and directly impacts existing home values, resulting in tangible losses for the current residents of River Haven from higher-than-normal crime rates. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make comments? If your comment is in regards to the hearing that we have further down on the agenda, I would like to ask you to hold your comments until we have that hearing. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Cindy Hewitt, 1509 West Washington. I've been before the city council once before about this problem of clearing the field, which is located off of a street all the way to the walkway. And last week, I spent several hours walking around, talking to the neighbors closest to the field and also to the businesses. And I got a little petition up stating that it's not just me that wants this done, it's all of these people. Every business, with the exception of Ferguson, signed it. They all want it done. And there was a lot of people on this list that had been speaking with the City of Pasco and also Burlington Northern with no regard for years. And I just found out today that Burlington Northern is basically a sovereign nation. But you guys don't, they don't have to abide by the codes. You can ask them, but they don't have to do it. And there's something wrong there. Because the safety of the people that live in that community and the safety of the people that walk on that pathway are all in jeopardy. Of fire, of the homeless people. So I don't really understand. I mean, I know they've been out there and they've picked up the trash. And I've even seen people out there looking at the field. But whether or not they will actually do it is another thing. And I can't get any actual feedback from anybody in the City of Pasco, which would be nice. It would be nice to get some actual feedback if they are going to do it. And it would have been nice to know that they're not required to do it. But basically, I just want you to know that I am not the only one. I'm not the only one. There are, then this is not even the whole neighborhood. These are just the ones that are closest to the field. And they all want it done. And they've all been waiting for it to be done for years. Four years. So does somebody want this?
If you wanna turn that into our clerk out here, thank you. Anyone else wish to address council?
My name is Diane Johnson, and I live at 6716 Fenway in West Pasco. And I believe part of your hearing tonight is regarding some property behind movie theater. I am here regarding the car wash that is there on Convention and Burden. And I just want everyone to know at the city council what a problem this car wash is. We have noise all night long. We have people throwing stuff in our backyards, dogs being put in my backyard, my fence being broke down. And now you guys wanna go ahead and put more stuff out there? The road isn't big enough, the noise is terrible. I have no pictures on my walls because they fall off because of the noise from the car wash. So I just want the city council to be aware of the problems out there. We call the police when it gets really bad, when we can't sleep, when I have stuff falling off my walls, and they do not respond. They're to the point where they just don't respond. So I don't know what you guys can do about this, but I don't think you should be allowed to put anything else out there until all of this gets fixed. Thank you.
Good evening, council and city staff. Thomas Grandbois, Big Maple Properties, 108 North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. I wanted to come here and talk about something positive that we've seen in the last year in the downtown. I don't know how many of you have a chance to spend time down there, but city staff has done a really great job. When it comes to street cleaning and street sweeping, now they have a crew that comes out, keeps the sidewalks nice and clean, looks after things. And it's been day and night from what it was over a year ago. Installing the trash cans was a huge success. I know it was, it took a little bit of, a little bit of pushing to get done, but it's been a huge success keeping trash off the streets. We really appreciate that. Just recently seeing the Thunderbird Motel being converted into parking. We can see it's almost there. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to drive through the area, but it is amazing seeing that going down and how much available parking that's gonna bring to the downtown and not only residents, but also business owners and visitors to the downtown as well. So that's gonna really help, help things out as well as that's helped improve the safety situation, I think. I'd feel comfortable saying that it's a tenth of what it was downtown now in terms of safety, or the feeling of safety at least. It's been an incredible change. Obviously, there are still things to do. No job is ever 100% done, but it's been, it's been pretty incredible. So I wanted to thank staff, the Parks guys, it's been a good, it's good to see the Parks guys and the police sort of identify issues and figure out how to work together. Again, sometimes those silos, I understand, are tough to break down, but now we see that positive momentum happening. So I wanted to take this moment and thank, thank you. And I'm sure that there are some things that I'm missing, but I'm always available to chat about the downtown, so thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment?
All righty. Russell Glad, 7004 West Court, Pasco. I've lived here since 1969. I'm real proud to live here in Pasco. I have chose to make Pasco my long-term home. I have numerous properties here in Pasco, mainly rental properties. I do have a property in downtown Pasco that I hope to develop in the spring. And I hope to put a drive-through business in there. One thing that comes to my attention is, is I can remember downtown Pasco in the 70s and 80s. Columbia Center opened in 1969. The City of Pasco downtown deteriorated. We had XXX theaters, we had high crime, pawn shops. And from what I recall, our former city manager, Gary Crutchfield, in the 80s, maybe early 90s initiated some standards for downtown Pasco. And that really started the improvement of downtown Pasco. I'm very thankful for this council, the staff, as well as some past city councils. I do see improvements, the Thunderbird has come down. I see the overpass, I see the downtown market. I'm really impressed what I'm seeing so far. One thing that I like, this come to my attention, I understand that there's that thing about a marijuana store downtown. I do not think that's in Pasco's best interest, especially downtown Pasco. And I don't want it to see return back to the 1970s. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council?
Hi, my name is Ashley Adkins, 5913 West Ruby Street in Pasco. I came here today to talk about the fencing issue, the corner lot fencing. That was on the agenda previously, but we haven't brought it up again. If we can bring that back up and put that back on the agenda, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council, David Morgan, 1827 West Octave Street. I wanted to inform you about a meeting coming up Friday, the 16th. Excuse me, in Spokane, Washington. It's with one of the council members there and also a police captain. So you guys can join it via Skype if you'd like. I'll send email the information over to you guys just in case. And then the other, I had a question. I was wondering if you guys had had the opportunity to schedule those meetings in the different areas to where the public can voice their opinions on the cannabis, so.
We will bring that up on our next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Okay, seeing no further comment from chambers, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Reports from committees and/or officers. Do any of our council wish to share anything they've done in the past week or so? Councilmember Brown.
Yes, just to share, over, I think it was last Saturday, a back-to-school event I attended. It was a wonderful outing. Some of the groups there was WOW, Women of Wisdom, Access, and Juneteenth Committees was doing an excellent job at school supplies. They had many different small events out there. I don't remember the timeframe, it was just a couple hours, but it was, it was awesome to be out there. So just want to let Pasco know, we represented you well. And it was a wonderful event. Those kids were really, really excited. So if I'm really bragging on the fun that the kids have, then I am doing my job. It was awesome. So that's my announcement for today. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else? Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have been trying to attend that standing meeting for the Lakeview, Citizens of Lakeview. Looking like I'm streamlining it. I don't feel like I'm quite filling in for a former council member, Alvarado, but I think we've got a good grasp on what I can do for the community in Lakeview. And one of the asks that they've recently asked me to do is we're gonna do a meet and greet so people down there know who they can reach out to if they've got issues. The other part of that is, one of their big concerns right now is bus services, which is really nice because sitting on BFT Board of Directors, I was able to provide some feedback. I did a ride along with the new general manager a couple weeks back, and we got some answers to the community of Lakeview. So on that, we had our first executive meeting of the subcommittee for the board of directors. We're streamlining the process quite a bit. And really excited to see what the new general manager can bring to the table. She's already, I would say mixing things up, but it's, there's a, she's breaking up the status quo. She's not letting people just do things that they'd done. She's looking for ways to improve the business as a whole. And she's looking to make Tri-City's her home for the long term. So I'm excited to see what happens when we start doing some long-term planning for BFT.
Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else wish to share? Seeing no further comment, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Item eight, Hearings and Council Action on Ordinances and Resolutions Relating There Too. First item on our docket is a public hearing. So tonight's public hearing is the first of two steps for the annual comprehensive plan amendment cycle. The two steps are, one, setting and establishing the docket. And step two, evaluating the merits of the docketed items. The public hearing tonight is step one and will not be for discussion on the merits of the individual applications proposed or the impacts of any item. The second step will occur through the Planning Commission in October or November timeframe. City council will make a determination of docket items based on the following. One, is there sufficient time for council to make an informed decision regarding the docket? Two, will city staff be able to conduct sufficient analysis to develop policy and related development regulations if that is necessary? Three, has a proposed amendment been previously rejected for consideration? Four, will the amendment implement and comply with the adopted comprehensive plan and Washington State Growth Management Act? And five, is the proposed amendment better addressed through another planning process? Following the establishment of the docket, the amendments will be analyzed for conformance with applicable criteria and then brought back to the Planning Commission and city council for a final decision on the amendments. I want to reiterate that council, we will be considering the docket tonight and will not hear testimony on the merits and impacts of individual applications. And with that, Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. And.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and um, I certainly don't need to summarize anything. Additionally, you did an excellent job. Uh, the criteria are taken right from uh, the Washington Administrative Code. Uh, the purpose tonight, as I, as you mentioned, Madam Mayor, is to set the docket. The merits of the applications will be considered, starting with the planning commission. At a public hearing, much like one that was held in June, and then will uh, be uh, forwarded based on the planning commission's recommendation to council for uh, your decision on the matter. Staff does recommend that all of the applications be doctored for consideration as staff believes they can all be adequately addressed through the five criteria that you just summarized. And again, uh, based on the discussion tonight, staff will return to council with a resolution um, for your consideration on the nineteenth.
Thank you for that. Uh, so before I open the hearing, do we have any questions, comments uh, from our council? Councilman Serrano.
So I I just want to understand at this point in this process, in the event that we believe that something's not met one of these major criteria. We should either seek to remove it from the future action or ultimately no vote it through this process? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay, so this would be the, I just want to make sure this is the appropriate time for us to decide what moves forward and what's gets left behind, I guess. Thank you.
Mayor Potemaloni.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um. I I do have concerns that one of the items doesn't meet one of the criteria. Would it be better off to for us to wait until the, we've heard from the public? I'm I'm gonna look at you, Mr. Ferguson, if you can provide some advice here. Or should we have some discussion upfront? Um, where we as a council want to discuss that further before we listen to the public?
Sure, this is a uh, is is defined as what's uh, is a legislative public hearing. So your uh, your really, your only purpose is to take public input uh, related to uh, the items that you would like uh, council or uh, staff to come back to council with. Uh, on a resolution for you to actually uh, adopt a docket. Uh, and the 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 reason for that is that there's finite resources, the staff time that need to be implemented in that. So this is really your opportunity to uh, uh, if you if you so choose to weed out any uh, applicants that you feel um, or applications that you feel uh, don't meet those five criteria that the mayor uh, recited so that uh, staff can really focus their efforts. Um, so at this point, uh, really it's just a a a public hearing uh, for uh, you to be able to move forward and make your legislative decision.
Okay, appreciate that. Um, I guess I'll just voice my current concerns to council that application twenty 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 two dash what, zero one two? Um, I I'm not sure that meets criteria four. We're looking at the intent and the state language of the um, comp plan. I read through the comp plan very carefully um, in the past, and I found some areas there where where we're going to talk about both uh, preservation of historical properties as well as other matters. I have concerns that this proposal doesn't meet within that uh, criteria. So. Um, I'm interested in listening to the public, um, but I'm 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 gonna start with that as being one of the concerns I have, and I'm interested in removing that from the docket. Thank you.
Well, valuable, I'll essentially second what you said. I I think there were, um, I mean, one, it didn't necessarily come to us with the recommendation. It was a a split vote. And then to your point, um. Now there's a potential significant impact to a very significant historical resource that's, I mean, it's it's not just a historical resource. It's also been a tremendous venue and a a benefit. I think it's, yeah. Uh, I'm I'm of the opinion that to the extent that we want to address it, we could address that individually. And then return to the other several items. Um, obviously, if someone has a strong opinion in opposition, then then we should certainly ferret that out. But I'm okay with essentially no voting this and we're just removing it completely.
Councilman Camples and then Councilwoman Roach.
Yeah, um, just for clarity, I think we came to us a split vote in terms of it wasn't necessarily for recommendation to move forward for approval. It was again, except for a docket, but that doesn't mean I disagree with Councilman Maloney and Councilman Serrano. I think that uh, Councilwoman Roach and I both has expressed that we saw this exact item come in front of us when we were on planning commission and it didn't meet the criteria set forth forth then, given we were working on the comp plan update, but it already didn't make it past us once before, and I'll see why it should go again. And in terms of expediting some of the comments in the room, it sounds like this is the right way to to discuss it and let our opinions be known.
I just wanted to get clarity again, Councilmember Serrano and Mil- um, excuse me, Maloney, did what uh, criteria number were you uh, referencing that it did not meet?
I was referencing um, item number four. Uh, will the amendment implement and comply with the adopted comprehensive plan and Washington State Growth Management Act? And there's items in our comprehensive plan that talk that that talk in in very large language about your historical preservation. There's a section on historical preservation. There's other sections about um, compatible uses and et cetera. And so I'm I'm concerned that this doesn't meet the the language and intent of our existing and adopted comp plan.
And I'd say that mine's like a soft version of three where the the proposed amendment's been previously rejected. Well, it wasn't rejected. It didn't come with a strong resolute, yes. I believe it was uh, seven commissioners, planning commissioners were in in attendance. One recused, and then there was a question about uh, how discussion further occurred, then it was essentially three, three split. I think this is our time to, you know, fundamentally, if we've got a position, it's worth stating. And mine is that between what Councilman Maloney said and this concern about item number three, again, while it's not rejected, it certainly wasn't endorsed highly.
Thanks. Councilman Mill.
Uh, yeah, I can agree with, I agree with everybody up here. Um, I do know this neighborhood. I do represent this neighborhood and talking with a lot of my neighbors, I could say that this would just totally, I mean, ruin the whole area besides the traffic concerns, the noise. I mean, it just, I can't even believe it's got this far. Um, I honestly feel the issue is being voted down immediately and save the staff some time and uh, move forward. Um, but again, I just I'm very frustrated that it even come up this far, but uh, yeah, I definitely a hundred percent in opposition to this.
Thank you. Just to clarify, uh, Mayor Potemaloni, what application number did you state?
Dash zero one two. That was a low density residential, high density residential. Um, application for five point seven eight acres.
Thank you for that. And um.
I do have a quick question, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, um, Mr. Ferguson, would it be appropriate or reasonable for us to um, uh, make a motion to remove this from the docket um, before the public hearing? Is that acceptable or is that something that we need to based on um, requirements of law, wait until the public has been heard on all the items before we make a motion?
The latter, yeah. You should, uh, I I, my advice would be to uh, wait until you've heard from the public, you've had public input, then you can move forward and give staff clear direction. Uh, it's really uh, open, your process, however you want to go through this, is really up to the council, but uh, uh, for due process requirements, I would suggest that you you wait and hear from folks and then uh, um, take uh, take and give us an ability to to know what to pursue after that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I retract my comment because he asked. It was, that's where I was going. Um, so, um, any further questions or comments to staff before I open this hearing? No further questions or comments. Uh, let me just go back real quick. Okay, and this hearing is now open. Um, does anyone from the pub- public wish to make any comments on this? Item. Thank you.
There we go. Thought you were telling me to lean over and get closer to the mic. It's a statutory hazard. Um, Madam Mayor and Council, thanks for the opportunity to uh, to speak. I don't want to take up any more of your time than is necessary. So if I could get just a bit of clarification, uh, you might understand that the public hearing is only to speak to the four criteria that are relevant to a package moving forward. Or is it permissible to speak to our other reasons for being in opposition?
You may speak freely.
Okay, then uh, let me try to be succinct here. I even wrote it down, which is good for me, as many of you know. Five items, uh, no particular order, but probably in increasing significance are reasons why I think this ought not go forward. When I say this, it's item twelve. Uh, three or four members of the council have already spoken to. One. Riverview is the neighborhood is a long established, single family residential community. It's been there for more than half a century. And under Washington's own code, fifty years is sort of, not sort of, it's a formal historical marker for when neighborhoods and facilities and structures actually can become historical in and of themselves. And so the pattern of development, the history in the Riverview area over fifty years, I think is undeniable, and the proposal would completely run contrary to that historical uh, phase of that that community and that historically important part of Pasco. Two, the developer himself has indicated that he would be willing to develop the property as it's currently zoned a single family residential. But acknowledged that if he could get it rezoned under the comp plan change for high density, that he could make a lot more money. I submit that the Growth Management Hearings Board and the Washington State Growth Management Act both would repel against any notion of changing a comp plan merely to enrich the pocket of a developer. That's antithetical to the law and ought not happen. Three, um, I believe there was a SEPA, State Environmental Policy Act review, a DNS determination non-significance. Uh, for the proposal, I submit that it's my view that the consideration for the historical nature of the adjacent National Historic Registered Property didn't meet the threshold requirements under SEPA. And therefore, the SEPA DNS is suspect, again, my opinion. Uh, fourth, the planning commission process clearly unfortunately was very corrupted. Uh, one member of the planning commission, I think honorably and with the very best of intent, recused himself. And then perhaps forgot he recused himself. I'm not sure what happened, but he continued in the process and actually participated in the discussion and participated in influencing the votes of other planning commission members. Given that it ended up being a three to three tie, should he have or may he have influenced one other person to vote in his direction? The the entire process is corrupted. And of course, I think as we all know now, it went beyond discussion. He actually voted for the action. So it's it's unfortunate. Again, I believe his intentions were honorable. I think he simply made administrative mistake. But again, it corrupts your or the uh, process on this particular issue, and therefore the vote, I think, ought to be null and void. And lastly, and this one perhaps is the most relevant and most compelling. Is that the other comp plan proposed amendments that were presented to the planning commission and now have come to the council include something on the order of six or seven hundred acres of land to be converted into medium and high density development. Now, I understand that Pasco and Franklin County are among the fastest growing in the state. I think most of you know I've been a county commissioner here for fourteen going on fifteen years. I think nobody feels that frankly more than I do. But uh, in this particular case, uh, while there is a genuine need for middle level housing. Uh, that I think is already being met. If you look at your planning department, number of building permits that they're dealing with. And you look at Franklin County's building department, and then you look at six or seven hundred acres of additional medium and high density. Uh, the timing may not be perfect, but the housing will be here shortly. And there's certainly no justification for uh, dismantling a historic neighborhood of Riverview. Uh, when we merely need to wait just a bit longer. Thanks very much for the opportunity to uh, speak to you this evening. I appreciate what you do. I know how hard public service can be on occasion.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make comments on this docket?
Good evening. I'm Alicia Greenaway, four one six North Road thirty four. I'm a commissioner uh, with B E, B O E, Board of Equalization for Franklin County. Um, as Commissioner Peck said, we have all this land that we have opened up for housing of medium and high des- density. We do not need this as high density. Um, hopefully I won't see any people here on my board this year. Um, I do taxes. So I hopefully see and review. Um, we don't need it. We've got tons of open space that we are building houses in high density. We don't need it in a small space. You have to look at it also, uh, for safety reasons. This is a landlocked piece of property that they're going to have to buy two houses. They're going to have to take road thirty four encroach on people's property to widen road thirty four. To make it wide enough to get emergency equipment up and down. That means all these people's properties are going to be encroached upon. Uh, which rightfully so, if they get this passed. Uh, they're going to have to take two people's homes and buy them. If people want to sell it, great. Uh, you gotta, you gotta look at the safety factor to all of that. It doesn't work in that area. If you've ever driven through down there, it doesn't fit. There's a lot of other places you can do it. It doesn't work. And that's what it boils down to. We have other places it can fit. Boils down to that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Hi, my name is Shamant Hill. I live on three twenty Row thirty four. I highly oppose this. I went around and got signatures from thirty or four thirty residents that live in the neighborhood. They're opposing it. Also, not very many people knew about it. So I just want you to all read my letter and know that most people do not want this. In fact, only one person said that they are okay with it. So thank you. I hope that you hear us.
Just to confirm, when you say this, you're talking about action item number twelve?
Uh, yes, on Hopkins.
You can submit those to our clerk.
I gave her a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So I do have two written comments. Mr. Ferguson, should I read those out loud for record?
Excuse me, sorry, as long as those have been given to the clerk, it's in the record.
So we do have comments here from Mr. Tom Von Dorn and uh, D. Han- Hans. Um, these will be entered into uh, record. Anyone else wish to make a comment?
Hello, hello. My name is Houston Lillard. I'm uh, excuse me, coming down with a code. I'm one of the uh, developers um, who are part of the expansion of the higher density. And um, I sat back quietly. Um, I've been a part of the community out here for over the last twelve, fourteen years. Um, I understand it's a great place to live. I know it's a lot of good people. Who um, appreciate, you know, the way they live, their comfort. But I mean, you know, in life, you know, everything is about growing. It's about supporting. I heard a a fine gentleman come up here and say that um, the priority is about making your pockets fatter. About, you know, all of the things that don't represent what we stand for. So. I was moved to speak on behalf of purpose. Um. The reasoning, you know, we all come from different backgrounds. We all have our own goals to accomplish and adhere by in life, but for us, it's about growth. You know what I'm saying? Coming together. Doing what's ever expected and some, I mean, we fight tooth and nail for what we believe in too. So. We're not trying to disrupt anybody's homes. We're not trying to disregard anybody's comfort. Um, anybody who lives over there knows. We, we just got into this a couple months ago. So we don't know about, you know, whatever relationships in the past, but we come with respect. Uh, we believe in everything we do, and nothing we do is to disregard others or to inflate ourselves. To make others feel less than. And that goes for everyone who lives over there, everyone on this on this pedestal. And just speak on behalf of us, you know, we work hard and we true to what we do. And um, and we 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 love this community. We both play football for the Tri-Cities Fever. Um, and we were able to change our lives and be successful in this area. So that's why we develop. That's why we try to, you know, uplift communities and be a part of change. So. Hopefully y'all, you know, obviously out here, everybody kind of make their decisions, but for us, it's just about helping change, growth, and um, bringing people together. So for everybody who feels, you know, that is a a negative connotation behind this action. It's all about uplifting each other, coming together and uh, bringing unity to what's going on. So. My name is Houston Lillard, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. And when, anyone else wish to make uh, any comment?
Deborah Peck, one zero 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 six West Court Street. Um, well, I could talk a long time on how I think it would impact that historic National Registered Property, but that would be over my three minutes. So I'm going to just speak a little bit about. So I'm going to just speak a little bit about Riverview. I lived there for almost sixteen years. It's a very special neighborhood. I don't think there's anything else like it in Pasco, city of Pasco. My neighbors had horses, chickens. They raised pigs for the fair. It's just, it's just very unique. And this isn't the first time we've been here speaking about this. Aaron Beasley has had other plans to develop that land. And the words "last time," well, why don't you develop it, single-family, large lot? Well, that won't pencil out. Those were the exact words. So we can say this isn't about money, but I'm going to speak for my neighbors, because a little of my heart, a little bit of my heart is still there, and say that it is zoned properly. Large lot, single-family home is consistent with the neighborhood. It's the only thing that will work in that neighborhood. It's the only thing that the neighbors desert, frankly. And they're not NIMBY. They're not, not in my backyard people. I mean, we came in there. They put, they put up with all the, you know, the renovation, everything, the events. They're, they're great people. They're not against, you know, whatever. It's not like that. They're supportive people. They're, it's a great community. It's very unique. It's very different. So if you haven't, like, been through there and looked in the backyard, it's just a very rural feel. It's, it is not at all consistent with even a four-story apartment building, let alone higher. And I just ask you to, to remember that. Remember those neighbors. They've been there a long time. I had my neighbor across the street, I think he's been there fifty years. I mean, he lived there when there were grapes growing at Moore Mansion, and they still tell those stories. I mean, it's still there, and let's keep it intact, please. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Name, Aaron Beasley, thirty-five-oh-two Hopkins Street. I have lived here for over sixty-some years, grew up here. I worked for the Pasco PD in the reserve program for over ten years. I've been a firefighter for the city of Pasco for thirty-one years. I grew up here. I know what's here. I was here when the Moore Mansion burned down. I was here when the Moore Mansion was a care center. I've been here when the Moore Mansion was a rundown building that we had parties in and stuff. So that's how long we've been here. But what I'm here for is I started this project because I live at one-ninety-five Row thirty-six. And then we bought two-ten North Road thirty-four. So we own about three or four properties in this area. I grew up there. My kids grew up there. And we love this area. But at some point, we have to look at where we're going. And the comprehensive plan says we have to quit building out and start looking at where we built up and quit and use the land more feasible. And so that's one of the things that got us started on this project. And I have seen this. I've worked with my neighbors here and cleaned up the lots out there, trying to make the place better. We bought this property. We took me eight thousand dollars to clean it up. That's how much junk was out there. We're trying to improve Pasco, not bring it down. And these are some of the things, people can make comments about me. Any developer, if they don't like you, they're going to make bad comments about you. One of the things is look at my record. My property on one-nine-five Row thirty-six, when I owned that, it was clean. When we bought the thirty-five-oh-two, we cleaned it up. When we bought the other property, we tore down two buildings that was crack houses. And you can check your records because the police had to raid the place and shut it down. And that's what we've been doing. That's what, that's what we about. It's developing and making this place a better place, not coming back and trying to hurt the community. We want to give you affordable housing where people can have a nice, affordable housing, walk along the river and see, just like what you did on Twentieth and A. That's what we're planning. And I, and I would like people to realize that this started out as a high-density area. That's why you have duplexes all along there. That's when I bought this, and you can check your records. I worked with Mr. Crutchfield. And at the time, he said, look, the property is going back and forth, high-density residential. He asked that we bring a true developer. Bring me a true developer and we'll change it back. That's all we asking for, is to change it back to what it was original. That's why you got duplexes down there. And we brought you a true developer. They then developed in Richland, and they have built all over the place. Developer out of Oregon. We checked his records. He can do this project. But these are some of the concerns that we wanted to point out. This was high-density. That's probably why you have the event center there. That's why you have duplexes on the other side. You already have multiple living there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Oh, sorry, not council, from the chambers? So I have gentleman here first, gentleman first, and then you can go next. And there was someone else over here that was going to make a comment.
Okay. Hi, I'm Denise Pearson. I live at thirty-six-twenty-one West Halsted Street, which is just pretty close to the Moore Mansion off of Road thirty-six. As far as I know, we are zoned at an R-one level right now, which includes low-density, allows single-family home, courtyard apartment, which is not the four-story apartment. And there is allowed triplex and duplex. So there has been those there for several years, but they're all one level. And so right now, we are zoned at R-one. The intention of the low-density residential area to high-density residential area is not appropriate for our neighborhood. I have concerns about access for safety, for the fire trucks access. There is, there needs to be two entryways to this apartment, so-called apartment place that is going to be built. And as far as I know, you know, this, I've talked to somebody today, you know, there's two-hundred-and-fifty-two parking lots. As far as I know, there's about twenty-two buildings, and three buildings will face the river. You know, we live there, and we have to pay for tickets to go see the boat races. I know boat races is just part of a small portion of it. But, you know, there's riverfront property there that people still have to pay for their tickets. So the people in the apartments that face the river will be able to just watch the boat races. So there's a big concern about the boat races. There's no other apartment complexes that have along the Pasco side to access for the boat races. And I know that's a small portion of the year, but it is a big event for our Tri-City area. I am concerned about how many buildings. It sounds like the planning preliminary site plan has about twenty-two buildings. And, you know, one-hundred-and-forty-one apartments, that, that's a big, that's going to be a big change. The Moore Mansion maybe is a wonderful historical event center, and what kind of events, weddings, is that going to be with, you know, twenty-two buildings, two-hundred-and-fifty-two parking spots that's right next door? I don't think that that's going to be appropriate for that area. Plus, the land, I know when you build, you, you level it all off, but, you know, you're, that land is not level. It's going to have to have many dump trucks get back there. How are we going to do that, you know? So I am opposed to this, and I would appreciate it if you, I'm glad for what was discussed. And I've lived there for twenty-five years, and I've lived in Pasco my whole life, so I do know the area. And it is a beautiful place. But there is not a place for a four-story, many-apartment buildings. There are many other places that was mentioned before that. So we are not, the, the whole unity thing, the whole, you know, we're all being this together. There is a lot of other places, and there, you know, there's nice houses there that anybody can afford. So thank you very much for your time.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lionel Singleton, eleven-forty-eight Coleman Park Trail. I'm here to speak on the development side. We can move up here and back in two thousand and ten, like anyone else, and we had an opportunity to, to move up here. And I actually was, not to be saying the story, whatever, I came from Florida, and I didn't have no place to stay there. So one of the opportunities that I got to play for the Tri-Cities Fever was apartment complex. An apartment complex, and I've been bouncing around so many different apartment complexes and got an opportunity to stay there, and it changed my whole entire life. My family has been developing in Florida for a long period of time, and so I kind of fell into that situation. One of the, one of the main reasons of kind of doing the development, and I don't know what happened in the past or anything like that, I really don't. And I hear so many stories saying that, hey, I have talked to the person, and they have said that we're trying to make more money. I haven't talked to anybody who came up here, so I don't know how that even happened. You know what I'm saying? Me and my partner hasn't talked to anybody. So if somebody come up here and say that I have spoken to them, they said it could be single-family, and they're going to try to make more money, that is a lie. So I have not talked to anybody like that. On the other hand, when someone says other different things that are coming to speaking about, you know, saying the development is just kind of flabbergasting that these people will be saying these type of things. But I understand, like, hey, you're moving, you have your own place. You don't want to bring nothing to, you know, saying the, the, the area that you don't want to mess up, you know, saying the, the flow of things and everything like that. If you look at, I guess, the single-family homes on the water here in Pasco are, what, what's going for four, five, six hundred thousand dollars at the time right now, I don't know, how would you be able to sit here and, I wouldn't be able to afford anything like that. You know, saying four or five hundred thousand dollars every doing single-family homes and things like that. So I'm just saying, they say, to bring more, someone said they were bringing four stories. I don't know who told them that we're doing four stories homes. Who told them that we're doing twenty-two buildings, anything like that? So I don't know where these things are coming from. High-density is something that we're just trying to like, hey, can we do the high-density? Can we bring more, you know, saying, living here? If we do do single-family homes or whatever that looks like, do you get to look over the river? So we're going to be building homes. It doesn't get the, the view of the water. The lever is already high. So if you, single-family homes, one story, okay. We have, how many homes out there would it be able to see over the water? You know, so this, this, giving the, the people a view of whatever many stories it is, apartments on the water, I think is a, a great opportunity for whatever type of housing. The housing that we did in Richland, we just built some apartments over there. We have two-point-nine acres, and we could do a hundred and twenty units on two-point-nine acres. This is six acres, and we're not even trying to get close to that. So those are the different things or whatever, and we have the parking. Everything is perfect. Everything is fine. We had the same situation of talking to different neighbors. The land is going up, the value is going up, and all type of different things. So I hear a lot of negative things like, okay, yeah, there's more people want to be there, but I feel like more people, more opportunities for people to kind of move in. If the housing market, if the interest is high, how can someone come and buy a home for four, five, six hundred thousand dollars right now? You know, saying, and if, if you're going to build something on the water, not knowing what the price will really be, but I would think it's going to be something like that or whatever. But now you can come in, you can get studios, you get small units and things like that, to have someone to kind of come in from the outside or whatever. I started after-school program back here, back in two thousand eleven, about two thousand and eleven, after School Matters. We had East Gate Elementary, Park Middle School, all the different things like that. That was one of the things. And some of our kids actually are, some of the families are staying in apartments in Richland because they got kicked out of someplace or whatever. Will they be able to go buy a house? No, they won't be able to house. So if we can have some apartments with a nice view that a lot of people don't get an opportunity to see on the water, you know, saying, being from Florida, everything's on the water is, is a nice view. It's something nice. And if you have one story that you can't look over, something like, what is the purpose of the water view? That's just like building storage units on the water. Like, you're going to build storage in the water, you can't see anything. So now we're just trying to take advantage. Yes, we can sit here and build whatever we need to build, whatever that, development is, is kind of working with the community. If they're saying, oh, they're too close or whatever, we, we have the trees, we have some walls, we have space in between it. If we need, I know we definitely need the roads and different things like that, but that's how, I have already been in a talk, and that's going to be coming later on if something does go on, but maybe if it's not high-density, then what about R-three? Like, why are we just sitting here just, hey, no, we just want single families, and that's it, or, or, or whatever else is after that? So I'm just sitting here, just kind of expressing my concerns, expressing my thoughts on how can we take advantage of this opportunity where it is on the water? There is a highway. I know, say, in, in, in the dock is that, hey, by the noise and things like that, we would want kind of apartments over there and, and things like that. So these are just some of the, the stuff that I wanted to kind of bring to your attention and try to figure out, oh, how can we, yes, definitely come together, and if it is a problem with the neighbors and stuff like, we can build things around that. We can help out. You know, saying things are doing over there on the property. So we want you to kind of consider it, you know, so really think about what can we do for this, and this is a whole new, different development. It's a whole new, different ownership. I know Mr. Beasley, like, he's, he's selling the land. He's not, nothing to, we're, we're trying to come in and develop. We have a good team. We got a team from Portland. I got me, we're from, from here basically for like ten years, fifteen, fifteen to ten years. And I feel like we can, there's still whatever amount of money that's being invested into it to bring the water up. If we have the boat races, we can have boat races. We can have a place where they could kind of, people could come and see the boat races from whatever view that we need to have it. And it's kind of something similar to the apartments right down the road from it. That got, I think that got rezoned to R-three or something like that, and that's on the water. So what, how can we bring more opportunities to the water? Is this my, my, my question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. Thanks for your attention tonight. And I'll try not to delve into potential impacts that this project may present.
Can you state your name and address for record, please?
Thank you. Shane O'Neil, Clover Planning and Zoning. Address, sixty-nine-oh-four Rogue Drive in Pasco, Washington. As I'm putting together some loose points here, but I like what Lionel said. I want to first address the, some of the things that council members said in relation to the specific criteria that we have to consider right now. This application was never previously rejected. And just because the planning commission had a split vote is, is completely apples and oranges from what that criteria is intended to mean. So the split vote is not a prior application. So this is just this application now. We got a split vote. There, I'd, I'd be happy to know what that file number was, but I've not discovered a previous account plan amendment specifically that had been rezoned. There was some indication there may have been, oh, sorry, a comp plan amendment that's been denied. There may have been a rezone previously rejected, and we'll get to that point, I guess, if we get past the comp plan amendment. But this was not previously rejected. And I think Mr. Maloney asserted that, you know, the historic preservation, land use goal policy is important, and perhaps it is. And I suggest that it is far outweighed by the land use goals that support this application. That combined with the Growth Management Act directly. The comp plan goals that directly support this application are land use goals two A, four B, four D, four C, and four F. Largely, that, that whole Section Four encourages infill and higher residential densities and uses with a close proximity to major transportation corridors and public transportation service areas. This site is four hundred feet away from the three-ninety-five corridor. It's very close. So what would you like to see when you drive by, you know, as the, the bridge begins to lift there? I'm sorry, I'm getting into impacts. But again, it is, is very close to the, the transportation corridor and a special use permit, an event center authorized by special use permit shall not interfere with normal land use action. I suggest that I suggest that, uh, special use permit be revoked if it attempts to interfere with land use actions. It, it's an event center, it, yeah, it's historic property and development next to it won't take away its historic designation. It won't remove the site, the site's already been burned down and rebuilt, you know. By rejecting this application to go forward, you're pretty much condemning that property to a development exactly like the Moore Mansion to go in there. One house on one huge lot. You need somebody with, uh, a large backing, whether it be one person who has a ton of money or a developer like this. Somebody needs to go in and figure out the access issues of this parcel. I mean, it's dilapidated, it's, it, the, the structure's from nineteen ten or something. Uh, there's junky elm trees there. It's completely devoid of any significant vegetation or unique river environmental features, you know. We have a similar development going on, uh, being built right now, as you probably know, on the opposite side of three ninety-five, very close to the river. This would mirror that. Um. Like Lionel said, you know, we need to think of the Shoreline Management Act and try to maximize these, the appreciation of this river front environment. You know, you're gonna either designate one family and one person to look at it, or you could have, you know, ten, twenty, thirty people with elevated views somewhat that, that have a nice open view of the river, they can look at the boat races and enjoy that like continually. Um, this application is not a dramatic one. It's, it's simply asking to go from one residential designation to another. It's not going to commercial or industrial. Um, and, and even though this is, does not fall in the shoreline environment, it is very close. And I think council should consider the intent of the Shoreline Management Act, which is to maximize use and opportunity and views and appreciation for the river. Um, cause I mean, if, if this is rejected from going forward. Think about it, you're just gonna have a vacant site for an, another very long period of time. It's, it's, we haven't had, uh, this number of, of comp plan amendment applications like ever. There's, there's a serious interest now and I think you, the council will be remiss not to entertain the, the merits of this. I, I could go on, um, I wanted to point out that I did provide a, a letter that was my testimony during the planning com- uh, planning commission public hearing. And I don't see that it made it into the record, into the, the comments. And hopefully that can be remedied and you can get a copy of that and I sent it to Rick again today. Yeah, yeah, this is not the most popular application, but, uh, land use action like this quasi legislative action is not a popularity contest. It's, it's merely one of the criteria that, uh, you know, considering its compatibility is merely one of the criteria. Please, if you don't think this request is appropriate, uh, uh, please exercise option C, which would be a suggested modification. We'd be happy to go back and, and downgrade the residential density, the, the land use designation down to medium, high or medium. We have a lot of other choices. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this?
Good evening. My name is Ray Salinas, I live at thirty-three twenty West Hopkins Street. Um, me and my wife bought this piece of property years ago to have peace and privacy and with it going to, if it goes to high density, it's, all that's out the door. I mean, right now as it is, as it sits, it's peaceful, it's quiet, we have no worries in the world. You know, I can let my kids go outside in the backyard and don't have to worry about other people. Um, you know, uh, my wife and I, we oppose this, so we're just trying to keep it residential, low density. We can deal with that, but high density is just not for the, for the, uh, the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Aaron Brumbach, three, two, one, North Road thirty-five. Um, I, this is a, an, uh, application twelve as well. Um, I agree with everyone opposed it, my wife and I strongly do. But I just want to point out a couple of things, um, that I just can't sit back there and listen. Um, yes, it's four hundred feet from three ninety-five as a crow flies. Everyone knows you have to go up to Sylvester, over to twenty-eighth, down to Lewis Street to get on the freeway to go south. Go up to Court Street, over to twenty-eight, twenty-sixth to get, to go north. Um, so four hundred feet, okay, as a crow flies. Um, I want to thank the board, the council, excuse me, um, for at the beginning of this whole, um, uh, section of the meeting realizing that this, uh, shouldn't go forward. Um, I hope you can still feel that way. Um, so I just strongly oppose it. And I can reiterate everything that most of the people said here and the ne- uh, everyone in the negatives I said. Um, but I hope you dismiss this.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, council and staff, my name is Peter Harbster with Octair Engineering. Uh, before I know, just want to clarify, the public hearing has for all the applications, correct? Okay, I'm gonna change it up a little bit then. Um, we're here representing, uh, the landowner of our proposal, Mr. Freidel Burden Inc. This is for file number CPA two zero two-two dash zero zero six. Going from commercial to mixed residential, commercial. Uh, property is located north of Burns, east of Convention and west of Route sixty. Um, don't really have anything to add, uh, outside of Director Wyatt's staff report that he already submitted. Um, we're certainly in favor of including it on the docket, uh, would ask the council, go with planning commission's recommendation to include it. Um, we feel that we meet all five criteria items and planning commission members and public at the time had no questions about those five items. Uh, so we just thank you for your consideration and be sitting here if there's any questions that come up related to our project.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Uh, my name is Rick Simon with, uh, RPS Planning and I'm speaking on behalf of Todd and Stacy Kidwell, who are the applicants for application number one, uh, which is a, uh, amendment to go from medium densit- medium density residential to commercial the northwest corner of Burns and Broadmoor. And, uh, I just want to reiterate that, uh, our application does meet the, the five criteria that you're charged with reviewing tonight. I also wanted to point out that in your packets, you have, I think, twenty-eight letters of support from the, uh, surrounding community in support of this application. To be fair, there's also a petition signed by, I think, eight, uh, neighboring residents that are opposed to it. But it seems to me this is sort of the, the perfect, uh, situation that requires the public hearing process to go forward. The planning commission can hear the public testimony, can hear from staff, can hear from the applicants, review the plan and make a recommendation to you. And you can, you can make the final decision that's in the best interest of the community. Um, and I think that's the way the process is supposed to work. Uh, we feel we have a, a good application that is going to implement several of the, uh, comprehensive plans, uh, goals and policies. And we look forward to presenting that case, uh, to the commission and through the rest of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments this evening? And then the gentleman back here.
Madam Mayor, I realize I was up here before, so I'll make this very quick. This is the table for zoning out of the Pasco code. And it points out that RS twelve, which is a zoning for the property adjacent to Moore Mansion, is twelve thousand acre, or excuse me, twelve thousand feet per lot. So just under four homes per acre. There's six acres there. So the notion that this is one large lot that would have one big house on it, really it would accommodate somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, two dozen single family homes. So I just wanted to put that in perspective. I think somebody earlier said it was R one and in fact, it's, it's RS twelve and it's just under four houses per acre. So I just want to make that clarification, thank you.
Thank you. Gentleman back here, uh, give me just a second, he was first. And then it's your turn.
Thank you. My name's Mike Alchens, uh, I live at thirty-two seventeen West Hopkins. I've been there since, well, let's say eighty-five. And, uh, I strongly, strongly oppose this proposal of high density uh, apartments. If they've got other alternatives, I want to hear them. Uh, but I just wanted to come up and say I oppose this. Thank you.
Uh, just real quick, Lionel Singleton again, um, it's actually, it's two zonies, those different properties. So it's not just now, um, the R, R twelve, it's two different zonies, just letting them know, so, thank you.
Any further comments from, uh, Chambers?
My name's Taryn Brown from six, seven, one, six Fenway in Pasco. Uh, it's CPA two zero two-two zero zero seven. Uh, where Convention's at right now, it's a two, three lane with a turning lane in the center. On the other end, it's only two lanes, it's being used by the fire department and it looks like it's gonna be changed. Uh, from commercial to mixed residential and commercial. It's already severely packed, you almost can't get down that road. We have to close it down for anything to do with the track, the Hapo Center, soccer games, uh, softball games. It, going through the neighborhood, we got people dragging fifty-three foot reefer trailers through it because of where the commercial properties had built their loading docks, uh, for Vieira's Bakery and for the meat market that's went in there. We have the Car Wash backed up to there, we already have Dairy Queen. It is way too packed to be putting anything else in there until that wo- road is widened out and potentially been closing off the neighborhood. I don't know how many of you guys go through that area very often, but it, it is a hazard. We have people running across there, there's no crosswalks through there, there's no stoplights through there. It's basically a drag strip and it's very unfortunate, the community's really suffering. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Hi, good evening, uh, my name is Thomas King, I live at, uh, two hundred, uh, Road thirty-four in Pasco. Um, I, I'm not gonna take up too much of your time tonight because, uh, pretty much what I'm gonna say is, uh, has been covered by a lot of people here. This regarding the Road thirty-four issue. And, uh, uh, my intent is basically to register my opposition to this plan of, uh, switching it over to a high density, uh, area. And, uh, as Commissioner Peck has already mentioned, I realize it's difficult, you know, to serve a public service because it's really hard to keep everyone happy because the fact is you, you just can't. Um, my opposition mainly is based on the fact that, uh, this will significantly change the neighborhood. And, uh, you know, it's a disservice for a lot of the people who live here and I lived here many years as well. Uh, that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Any further comment from Chambers? Second call for comments on this docket. Third and final call for comments on this docket. No further comment, this hearing is now closed. Can I get a motion?
Uh, I don't believe you have a motion in front of us tonight, um, Madam Mayor, but I do have some questions, um, but Mr. Ferguson has lights on, he take preference.
Yeah, just to kind of, uh, put us back on the map of, about where we're at in this process. So at this point, really what council is doing is, uh, now that they've heard from the public, uh, they're, my suggestion would be to discuss this, uh, here. And then, uh, if, uh, if council can come to a consensus and give, uh, staff direction about what kind of resolution to come back, uh, with, uh, docket items. Um, that would be preferred, uh, certainly no requirement for, for council to come to a consensus tonight if there's other information they would like staff to, uh, go forth and, and gather, uh, to be able to come back and make that decision. But really, uh, no formal action, uh, necessary tonight. We just, uh, need, uh, council to be able to give, uh, staff consensus about, uh, what they would like us to, uh, come back with, uh, for, uh, resolution or more information.
Thank you. Mayor Pretam Maloney.
Thank you and thank you everyone who's shown up or sent us emails or otherwise gotten ahold of us on this, I mean, for these items that we discussed tonight as well as the other items. Um, I did look through all, um, nearly two hundred pages of comments that we received from the public on the, on these items and, um, you know, we, we do take this very seriously. We're very early in this process, um, and there's a lot more in terms of land use that I, I'm sure Director White could, uh, spend another half an hour telling us through what the process would be, even if we consider this on a docket, let alone, uh, further down the, on the process. Um, but I do have some questions for staff, so, uh, Director White, um, one of the questions or one of the, the statements that was made was um, whether or not we could change any, um, applications at this time, uh, for, for this round of updates to the comp plan. Um, can you tell me about whether that is a process that we can go through at this point in time? Or is this sort of thing that would just simply be unfeasible on a timescale we're on?
Well, Mr. Maloney, um, I don't know that now would be the time to change any application, certainly. Um, something like that could occur later in the process during the public portion, uh, related to the merits of each application. But I would, um, recommend that if that does occur, it'd only be, uh, through the express written consent of the applicant.
And the reason why I'm asking is because one of the comments on, on twelve, on dash zero twelve was, well, if not, um, high density residential and R four type zone, then what about something lower than that? And it sounded like poten- potentially an, that the applicant might be interested in doing so. Um, so it sounds like we'd have consent potentially of the, of the applicant, but not necessarily something that would satisfy the community that's also concerned about this. So could you just tell me about how, what would be a, what would be a reasonable process to go through this or maybe if, uh, Mr. Ferguson's got legal statements?
So I, I think I can, I can, uh, assist with this. Uh, so at this point, it would be, uh, it would be inappropriate to try to make those revisions. This is purely to decide whether, uh, those threshold, uh, requirements are met to have staff move forward and, um, the, uh, uh, apparently I said something wrong, so, uh, but, uh, the, uh, the, uh, so, uh, no, the, uh, so at this point, it would really be inappropriate to, to take on that task. Uh, this is really to determine whether you want staff to move forward in, in spending any more resources on, uh, investigating the, the, uh, the application. Uh, and you feel that, uh, uh, if you feel that those five requirements are met, uh, this is really, uh, the, the, the time for that. Uh, the, the, it, it's hard because this is kind of a, uh, a, a hybrid process in that there's a little bit of substance and, uh, merits that you need to consider to be able to determine whether those threshold questions have been met. Uh, but this is, and I want to be clear, this is not the time to, uh, talk about specific projects. This is not the time to talk about what, uh, could fit there, how it would fit there, what other requirements or impacts, as the gentleman pointed out. Uh, this is truly to only discuss whether, uh, it, the, the council would like to direct staff to spend more, uh, uh, energy, uh, developing whether, uh, it, the proper zoning, um, uh, is, is for this particular location.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, I appreciate that. I, I do have completely different questions, Director White, if you could, um, indulge me, please. Um, we have a number of applications here that are for mixed residential, commercial. Um, uh, that's a significant number of these. Um, one of the things I would note and for mixed residential, commercial, it, I guess, I'm, I have questions to ask about it as, uh, for, in terms of intention of what we want to do with mixed residential, commercial. Could a mixed residential, commercial be developed entirely as residential or entirely as commercial? Or does there any sort of requirements within our code that would require, um, the build out to eventually be a mixture of both?
Uh, yes to all three of those scenarios. It does allow, um, sole commercial, sole residential or a mix of both residential and commercial.
The reason why I ask is because when you look at mixed residential, commercial, um, it has a low, low end of its density at five residential units per, or dwelling units per acre, which puts it, um, kind of at the high end of our, of our current low density residential and slightly below that of the recommended. When you look at item, uh, dash eighteen in our, in this packet here, which increases the maximum, um, residential dwelling units for low density residential to six. Um, and I do have a concern, Mr. White, maybe this is, maybe is, would this be discussed in the later, uh, the, the next round, um, the next step in the process where we would, where we'd look at, be looking at, okay, well, does the mixed residential, commercial, um, and its overlap with low density residential put us in a space where we could be de facto zoning commercial back to low density residential?
Well, the, the, the comp plan will not accomplish rezones. Um, it will designate the appropriate, um, mix of possible zoning districts that would be considered. that would be considered by council through a rezone process. So certainly, that, that scenario could definitely happen. Someone could own property in the mixed residential, commercial, and, uh, do just what you said, or the opposite. It would, it could occur, um, to, uh, residential property.
All right, thank you. I think that'll be outside of this conversation, but I'll, um, I'll be interested in Director White having a further conversation with you about that. Um, last item, um, I'd ask, like to ask questions about Director White is dash ones, uh, zero, one, zero, um, which is a, which is the, um, application that the planning commission recommended, um, uh, denial for inclusion in the docket. Um, could you summarize for us, again, what the planning commissions, um, maybe summarize what their, what their reasoning was for, for recommending that does not include it on the docket? If that'd be more appropriate for bringing to us next meeting before we make, before, or before we, um, move forward a motion, I'd, I'd, if you need to do some measures, I'm fine with that, too.
No, I can, I can certainly do that. Uh, I did review the planning commission minutes, and, um, candidly, the, uh, planning commission did not recommend forwarding this, uh, for a docketed item, but it was not squarely based on the five criteria, and the minutes reflect that. It had to do more so with project, anticipated project impacts.
And so that would be evaluated further by staff in the next process outside, once, uh, once the docket is determined?
Yes.
I would be interested in adding that to the docket, um, I guess against the planning commission's intra, um, recommendation to make sure that we at least evaluate his staff. And if there is not the, and if it doesn't have further, um, merits or significant merits in the next step, then I, so I would see that panning out, and, uh, be very interested in that additional scrutiny then. But just, I guess, um, I'd, I'd make that comment, but I'd like to have that included in the docket for evaluation. And a- after hearing testimony and, and looking through our, our comp plan during this meeting, um, I would still recommend against inclusion of dash zero twelve in the docket. That's my, that's my recommendations.
Thank you. Councilman Compost?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for those of us who appear, you know, my comments about this coming for us, um, it wasn't this particular developer, but this plot of land came up once before during a comp plan amendment. It's CPA two thousand eighteen dash zero, zero, three, and it was asked to be rezoned. Uh, mixed use at that time, which again, based on the criteria that was laid out, the planning commission made a recommendation not to move forward on it because it changed the characteristic of the neighborhood and then concerns for access. Uh, I'm of the same mindset of Councilman Maloney. I'd like to not spend staff time in making a consideration for this. It doesn't prohibit this area from being developed as it's currently zoned, but I, I see no value in, in looking at the merit of other zonings. Um, just because we've, we've talked about this particular property once before. There was other items and zones that were es- established or requested at that time, and we shot it down once already. But again, I want to clarify, it sounds like there's some confusion. We're not looking and we're not striking against a particular developer. We're just looking at investing staff time and making a recommendation to move this further down the road. Um, and that goes with everything else that we've got in front of us tonight, is we're not approving or changing things. We're, we're trying to get staff to, to spend time to look at it and evaluate it and determine whether or not it, it fits the comp plan. And I just think that we should save that time and, and go ahead and could strike the zero, zero, one, two.
Well, um, I feel it's general consensus from previous comments and from supporting comments that we not move forward with including, uh, zero, one, two in this docket and removing it. Thank you. Any further action on this item?
Pleasure.
Thank you. Councilman Serrano?
I'd just like to address double oh seven. Um, as the gentleman spoke, you know, that's, that's gonna be a very tricky development, especially, my, my primary concern is the second of the fifth of the five criteria, whether the city will be able to conduct sufficient analysis to develop policy, which we won't need to develop policy, but re- related development regulations to double oh seven. If moved to, um, commercial slash residential, I, I, obviously, commercial's well-suited there. The traffic concern obviously becomes problematic. Obvi- I understand that's not a question before us right now. That's a subsequent issue that we need to address or staff needs to address and bring back to us. But I do want to, I guess, pointedly ask Mr. White whether or not, number two, um, these types of policy and analyses will be appropriately developed? Or should we just contemplate removing double oh seven at this point? You know, is that a sufficient burden? That if you have to review it for residential standards, that staff may not be able to appropriately, appropriately address it within the timeframe?
N- no, I, I don't believe that this application will require any special policy or regulation, uh, creation to, to address. I think we can address it within the timeframe established for the, this annual cycle.
Okay. I just wanted to get that at least out there, because again, just being well-familiar with the area and the mess. I mean, I've intentionally avoided DQ myself, you know, my kids want the ice cream. We can go somewhere else. Um, just because getting in and out sometimes at high traffic, with or without baseball games, is extremely problematic. And, and quite frankly, with limited pedestrian access, uh, not just the crosswalk, but the sidewalks and, and kind of the wiggly punch-through, which has been beneficial, but also problematic in its own right. Um, yeah, but so I, I just, I guess we can move forward with it, and hopefully staff can address those concerns as future actions brought forward. But, so for now, we'll leave it unless anyone else objects. But I did want to express those concerns and make sure the staff was kind of projecting the work that may need to be done on such a small development, but critical to that area.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments? Mayor Perdell Maloney?
Thank you. I, I guess I just, um, echo again, be, um, I'm, I feel a little uncomfortable, um, with any concept that staff may take my single voice as a recommendation on zero, one, zero. Um, but I believe as, as it come forward and, and by default would be for it to not be included in the do- in the docket. So I'd, I'd be interested in, in making sure that we have some sort of, uh, direction for staff on whether or not they, um, that proposal's worth the, the additional work to, to consider it. I, I believe it is, and so I'd, I'd encourage my fellow council members to, you know, um, help staff with that, understanding whether to move, whether to take further action on that. Thank you.
Councilman Serrano?
I'll just say from my perspective, insofar as staff's already reviewed this or provided any analysis, I'd like to see that. And then I think we can make a, a, an informed decision as to whether or not it need be included, if we can get that ahead of the packet. Is that, I mean, I guess, Mr. White, if you can rehash kind of what analysis, what information's been done that resulted in this?
Uh, zero, one, zero.
Correct.
Yeah, n- no, staff has not provided any analysis, although, um, again, as I stated earlier, uh, we do believe that it can be adequately analyzed with the five criteria that, um, Madam Mayor summarized at the very beginning of the hearing. And so that was, uh, the, uh, basis for our recommendation that it be included on the docket.
No, I guess in light of that information, I'm not opposed to including it.
Councilman Mill?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to also comment that I do appreciate all the neighbors coming out on the zero, one, two. It's always a good sign when you see people, and I know, listening to all the testimony, I didn't hear a single neighbor say that they did want apartment complex. And to me, that, uh, speaks volumes when you have your neighbors and everybody around you saying that we don't want this, or at least to this degree. So I just want to say thank you for coming out here. It's hard to come out on a Tuesday night and spend your evening listening through all this, and, uh, but I think it means a lot. It means when we have good and community engagement, and, uh, I just want to say thank you. And thank you for all the other councilmen that have visited this area and, uh, know this community. As Mrs. Peck was talking about it, uh, it just, uh, meets a lot. Actually, my first time I actually came to Pasco, I was actually invited to a house on the river and, uh, kind of see what Pasco's all about, and I'm glad I've made it my home for the last thirty years, so, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any further comments from council? Saying none, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. Uh, or do you need any further instruction? I have a request for a five-minute break. So we will take a break, uh, and, and return at eight forty-five.
Welcome to the webinar. You have entered as an organizer and may now speak to any other organizers or panelists on the line. When you are ready to begin the presentation, press the start broadcast button on the go-to webinar control panel to allow all attendees to hear you. This system will notify you once you begin your broadcast.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. This item concerns the existing moratorium on single-room occupancy conversions that council approved in March of this year. The proposed resolution continues that moratorium so the issue can be effectively analyzed in conjunction with other related housing issues in our housing capacity plan that has been executed with Department of Commerce and actually is beginning right now. Staff recommends that council approve the resolution so that can occur and we can raise the issue with staff's participation in the Furman Center for Housing Issues that were a part of this year.
Thank you. And so before opening this public hearing, can I get any questions or comments from council regarding this issue? Seeing no comments or questions to staff, this hearing is now open and with that I invite anyone in the chambers to make any comments. Second call for comments from the public. Third and final call for comments from public on this matter. Hearing no comments, this hearing is now closed. And with that, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four-two, four-one, continuing the moratorium established through resolution number four-one-five-eight prohibiting the permitting of single-room occupancy housing and conversion thereto in the city of Pasco pending study of impacts and best development practices and policy.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
There's a motion moved, sorry, motion presented by Mayor Pretamaloni and seconded by Councilman Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on to item nine, ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings, item A, public meeting and resolution number forty-two, forty-two, accepting a notice of intent for Alfred Cole annexation. Director White?
Thank you again, excuse me, Madam Mayor and Council. This annexation relatively small in size, is comprised of ten acres. It's located just south of Deseret Drive and it's just immediately west and adjacent to the existing city limits. The proposed resolution determines that council would accept the annexation with the boundary shown, determine that zoning will be established through a separate process through the hearing examiner and determine that if annexed it would be assuming a proportionate share of city bonded indebtedness. So staff would recommend approval of this annexation and just for council's interest, three more intents to petition to annex were received in the same neighborhood today. So you'll be seeing several other annexations in this neighborhood shortly.
Thank you for that. Now, this is a public meeting. Anywhere open to?
Yeah, this is one of those weird things in the statute where it just requires the council to have a meeting in public with the initiators of the annexation and obviously if they're here, they can certainly address council, but if not, you've given them that opportunity and can move forward.
Perfect, thank you. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none or hearing none, does council have any questions or comments? Mayor Pretamaloni?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Barajas. Director White, the petition for about fifty percent of the property owned, is that if I got the fifty percent of the assessed value within the proposed annexation, do we have indication of whether more than fifty percent are interested in this? I would hate for this to go through a process and give deadlock or fail.
No, actually, the petition or the intent to petition was signed by both property owners, each five-acre parcel. However, one of the signatures which was received the very last day it could be received had the signature on the wrong line. So with fifty percent, we're okay to move forward and then when the petition circulated, I'm certain that both owners will sign.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four-two, four-two, accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Alfred Cole annexation, providing a determination on the boundary to be annexed and whether simultaneous zoning and the assumption of bonded indebtedness will be required.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
There's a motion moved, sorry, motion presented by Mayor Pretamaloni and seconded by Councilman Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on to item nine, ordinances and resolutions not related to hearings, item A, public meeting and resolution number forty-two, forty-two, accepting a notice of intent for Alfred Cole annexation. Director White?
Thank you again, excuse me, Madam Mayor and Council. This annexation relatively small in size, is comprised of ten acres. It's located just south of Deseret Drive and it's just immediately west and adjacent to the existing city limits. The proposed resolution determines that council would accept the annexation with the boundary shown, determine that zoning will be established through a separate process through the hearing examiner and determine that if annexed it would be assuming a proportionate share of city bonded indebtedness. So staff would recommend approval of this annexation and just for council's interest, three more intents to petition to annex were received in the same neighborhood today. So you'll be seeing several other annexations in this neighborhood shortly.
Thank you for that. Now, this is a public meeting. Anywhere open to?
Yeah, this is one of those weird things in the statute where it just requires the council to have a meeting in public with the initiators of the annexation and obviously if they're here, they can certainly address council, but if not, you've given them that opportunity and can move forward.
Perfect, thank you. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none or hearing none, does council have any questions or comments? Mayor Pretamaloni?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Barajas. Director White, the petition for about fifty percent of the property owned, is that if I got the fifty percent of the assessed value within the proposed annexation, do we have indication of whether more than fifty percent are interested in this? I would hate for this to go through a process and give deadlock or fail.
No, actually, the petition or the intent to petition was signed by both property owners, each five-acre parcel. However, one of the signatures which was received the very last day it could be received had the signature on the wrong line. So with fifty percent, we're okay to move forward and then when the petition circulated, I'm certain that both owners will sign.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from council? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four-two, four-two, accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Alfred Cole annexation, providing a determination on the boundary to be annexed and whether simultaneous zoning and the assumption of bonded indebtedness will be required.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion by Mayor Pretamaloni and a second by Councilman Mill. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously, thank you. So we move on to item B, ordinance number four-six-zero-six, amending the Pasco Municipal Code by creating a new section to align with state laws and amending Title IX related to crimes of domestic violence and violations of court, of other court orders. And Mr. Ferguson?
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is a situation where we received a request from our prosecutor, Mr. Rio, to amend some of our code provisions in the Pasco Municipal Code which refer to some various state laws specifically dealing with no contact orders and there were several locations in the RCW where these were located and the legislature in an attempt to simplify things really consolidated those into a single section, most of those into a single section, RCW one, seven-one-oh-five. That had some kind of some unintended effects and I've asked Mr. Rio to come talk to you and maybe address some of the nuances and some of the changes. Most of these are not substantive changes, they're, they are just structural changes so that we can move forward and still be able to enforce those areas of our code that refer to the state code that no longer exist. So it's, for the most part, a, just a procedural update, but there is one specific area where there was a substantive change related to a definition and so I also wanted to give Mr. Rio a chance to address council and talk about some of the changes that he's dealing with and so that he can move forward and continue to enforce these as well as be able to have our, our court be, feel safe that they're not going to receive any further challenges. So with that, any questions for Mr. Rio and I know he wants to explain a few of the nuances.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council and Madam Mayor. So this is simply a modification of our PMC regarding changes that the legislature made in 2021. Most of those changes didn't go into effect until July of 2022. And so because of those changes and what happened was the legislature decided to streamline protection orders. And so they made a single section where you used to have to go to different sections in the RCW to figure out what form you needed, where you needed to file it, how it was served, all of these separate things and it was hard for people to navigate. Legislature decided we're going to put it in one place, have one form, use the form, you just check a box, you know, this is an anti-harassment order, this is a domestic violence protection order, this is, and so they set it up so that lay folks can use these orders and get, get to the court quickly, efficiently and get a resolution of their issues, usually through the issuance of a protection order. For the city of Pasco, this has resulted, the, the court has ruled on a couple of cases, it's two that I know of, that the order was issued after July first of 2022 and it wasn't covered by our current PMC. And so the court declined to allow us to prosecute those cases. All that meant was they go to Franklin County. So I work very well with Mr. Sands' office, we just moved those cases to Franklin County, they're being prosecuted. People aren't losing the ability to, to have protection under the law for violations of those orders. What this will allow for and after the judge made those decisions, the question was, well, how are we going to get this fixed, Mr. Rio? So I went to Mr. Ferguson, asked him to propose these changes and it's my request that the city would make these amendments so that we can continue prosecuting these cases.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mike, could you just talk about the one substantive change?
Oh, the one substantive change in section one-zero-two-zero-three-zero allows the city to adopt by reference code sections from the RCW. So rather than taking the language and putting it in the code, you can just adopt the code section from the RCW. In other cities that I work for, city of Richland, city of West Richland, what happens then is you put on the website essentially a link to that RCW, it says we've adopted RCW, whatever it is, and you can click on it and that brings up that page so that citizens have a good idea of what, what's allowed and not allowed under the city code and this provision allows the city to do that.
So I do have a couple of questions. One, how often is this changes to legislature happen and how often do you need to implement those changes into our current municipal code?
So it doesn't happen all that often because the city usually adopts its own code sections. In this particular instance, we had, we were having to make the amendment because we referred to all these other orders. And so what you don't want to have happen is the city can't prosecute a case because a municipal court or a district court on the west side issued an anti-harassment order and we didn't adopt the code section that would allow us to prosecute that case. So the reason that we don't have any problem with Pasco Municipal Code section is because we refer to our own code and say any order issued by the Pasco Municipal Court is a gross misdemeanor under the code and the city can prosecute it. We can't do that with all the other courts in the state, so we, we reference these RCWs that they enacted to allow those courts to proffer these no contact orders.
Okay, so I do have a follow-up question.
Yes.
Once that change has happened and passed through legislature, how soon do we implement it?
Well, so the answer is if you want, once, once this, the amendment's made by the state legislature, if we want to continue, once it becomes active, we need to make these modifications to keep up with what they're doing. And sometimes, this was a three-hundred-and-twenty-page bill. So it took a while for, especially with all the other changes and the chief can attest to this, all the other changes that went for law enforcement, we've been training and doing things with, with law enforcement on those sections, getting up to speed on that. And so this one was one that went until the last minute in July and so now here we are a couple of months later getting implemented.
And so just a follow-up comment, the reason why I'm asking is because I'm part of a board and I've consulted with Chief Frosky on this board, Sexual Offenders Policy Board and we're creating a policy that will be presented to legislature and there's several changes regarding domestic violence and no contact orders. And so just my questions were, as soon as it passes legislature, how soon can we implement those?
So you can't, you can't go before it's implemented by the legislature, meaning the effective date, but it should be very close to if the, the city council wants to and create the effectiveness of what the legislature's done, right? Or take what they've done, if it's something new, and adopt it, we should do it quickly so that it can be, as soon as the state code becomes valid, then the city code follows along.
Perfect, thank you. Mayor Pretamaloni?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. So my question is, the, the structure of this particular section seems to be a little different than I've seen in our PMC and maybe, maybe I'm just misremembering, but I don't think I've seen former sections of the RCW referred to as well as PMC sections as well as current RCWs. So that's more convoluted than I've seen in our code before. Can you talk to me about why, why we're doing this? This is weird.
Sure, it's, it's a very great question in respect to understanding what I have to do as a prosecutor. So if a, an order is put in place by a judge after July first of 2022, it's under RCW seven-one-oh-five. But there's a whole plethora of art, of orders that were put in place prior to July one of 2022. If we just took out all those other code sections and just went with seven-one-oh-five, then an order that was issued ten years ago on a sexual assault case, I couldn't prosecute a violation of that order because we didn't, we did away with that code section. So that's why we used former in there so that I can still prosecute and our office can still prosecute those former orders as well as any new orders that come to pass under the new code section.
So this is something where we've, we've, where an order's been issued, not that someone hasn't been charged at all, so this is in the statute of limitations thing, this is once it's been issued, then we can still enforce that indefinitely until that, this amendment, is that correct?
Correct. So what, what the situation is, is that some orders are, are lifetime orders, some orders are five-year orders, ten-year orders, twenty orders, it just depends on what the, what the code section allows for. So there may be orders that are ten years old and they haven't violated and then one day they decide to send a text message in violation of the order. It, it happens and then that gets referred to law enforcement, they decide, yes, this is a case that should be charged and if we don't have this form and language in there, we wouldn't be able to prosecute that and we'd have to send it to the county.
I appreciate that. I was hoping that you were going to say in like a year and a half, we were going to make this much more simple, but it sounds like that's not going to be a thing, so.
No, unfortunately not.
As the RCW continues to get more convoluted, it sounds like our PMC will also get more convoluted in certain areas. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Thank you.
So I will make a motion, Mayor Barajas. I move to adopt ordinance number forty-six-oh-six, creating a new section, one-point-oh-two-point-zero-three-zero of the Pasco Municipal Code and amending PMC sections nine dot one-zero dot zero-three-zero, nine dot one-zero dot zero-four-zero, nine dot one-five dot zero-four-zero, nine dot one-five dot zero-five-zero, nine dot two-zero dot zero-five-zero, nine dot two-zero dot zero-six-zero and nine dot two-zero dot zero-nine-zero, updating criminal codes to address changes in state law involving crimes of domestic violence and violation of court orders.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Thank you for that.
I'll second it.
Moved by Mayor Pretamaloni and seconded by Councilman Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously. So we'll move on to item C, resolution number forty-two, forty-three, surplus of city property, property along West A Street. Director Rattke?
All right, we, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. We do have two sequential items this evening. First is resolution number four-two, four-three, which declares city-owned property, in this case parcel number one-one-two-two-eight-two-one-three-eight. We declare that property a surplus to city need and put it up for sale this evening. For the last number of years, we've worked hard at the city to identify property that the city owns that is surplus to city need. Often these properties have ranged from former civic use sites, old buildings to remaindered parcels that have come about due to the new roadway construction, right-of-way redesign, that sort of thing. So we work hard to establish an inventory of these, put them up for sale. Sometimes we get smaller lots that neighboring property owner in this case would be interested in, so we go through our ordinance process and we do a market study. In this case, the market price for this property was twelve thousand dollars, so at the request of city council through this resolution, we ask that we can discuss the surplus of this property.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to Mr. Rattke? Seeing none, we'll get a motion.
I move to approve resolution number four-two, four-three, declaring city-owned real property surplus, setting the minimum price and the method of sale for parcel number one-one-two-two-eight-two-one-three-eight and further authorize the city manager to sell the property through Realtor listing for a minimum price determined through market analysis.
There's a motion, can I get a second? Moved by Mayor Pretamaloni and seconded by Councilman Brown. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And it passes unanimously. We'll move on to item D, resolution number four-two, four-four, sale of property along West A Street. Director Rattke?
All right, this is the same parcel that we have discussed previously, the previous item. Over the last year, the adjacent property owner to the south has transformed a former residence into a commercial business and this business has grown and the need for parking has grown. In fact, they have been using the adjacent city parking or city site for parking. This has caused a violation with the Pasco Municipal Code and working with code enforcement, community development and the property owner, it's been determined that with the offer to purchase the property, provide screening and a level of development that would conform to. Correct. So what, what the situation is, is that some orders are are lifetime orders. Some orders are five year orders, ten year orders, twenty orders. It just depends on what the, what the code section allows for. So there may be orders that are ten years old and they haven't violated. And then one day they decide to send a text message in violation of the order. Uh it it happens and then that gets referred to law enforcement. They decide, yes, this is a case that should be charged. And if we don't have this former language in there, we wouldn't be able to prosecute that and we'd have to send it to the county.
I appreciate that. I was hoping that you were gonna say in like a year and a half, we were gonna make this much more simple, but it sounds like that's not gonna be a thing. So as the RCW continues to get more conv- convoluted, it sounds like our PMC will also get more convoluted in certain areas. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Thank you.
So I will make a motion, uh Mayor Barra. I move to adopt ordinance number uh forty six oh six, creating a new section, uh one point oh two point zero three zero of the Pasco Municipal Code. Um and amending uh PMC sections nine dot one zero dot zero three zero, nine dot one zero dot zero four zero, nine dot one five dot zero four zero, nine dot one five dot zero five zero, nine dot two zero dot zero five zero, nine dot two zero dot zero six zero and nine dot two zero dot zero nine zero. Updating criminal codes to address changes in state law involving crimes of domestic violence and violation of court orders.
There's a motion. Can I get a second? Thank you for that.
I'll second it.
Moved by Mayor Perdama Lonnie and seconded by Councilman Serrano. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. And it passes unanimously. So we'll move on to item C, resolution number forty two forty three, surplus of city properly, property along West A Street. Uh Director Raka.
All right, we uh thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. We do have uh two sequential items this evening. First is uh resolution number four two four three, which uh declares city owned property, in this case parcel number one one two two eight two one three eight. Uh we declare that property a surplus to city need. And uh put it up for sale uh this evening. Uh for the last number of years, we've uh worked hard at the city to identify property that the city owns that is uh surplus to city need. Often these properties have uh ranged from former civic use sites, old buildings to uh remaindered parcels that have uh come about due to the new roadway construction, uh right of way redesign, uh that sort of thing. So we work hard to establish an inventory of these, put them up for sale. Sometimes we get smaller lots that uh neighboring property owner in this case would be interested in. So uh we go through our ordinance process and we do a market study. Um in this case, uh the market uh price for this property was twelve thousand dollars. So um at the request of uh city council through this resolution, uh we ask that uh um we can discuss the surplus of this property.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to Mr. Raka? Seeing none, we'll get a motion.
I move to approve resolution number four two four three, declaring city on real property surplus. Uh set, setting the minimum price and the method of sale for parcel number one one two two eight two one three eight. And further authorize the city manager to sell the property through Realtor listing for a minimum price determined through market analysis.
There's motion. Can I get a second? Moved by Mayor Perdama Lonnie and seconded by Councilman Brown. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. And it passes unanimously. We'll move on to item D. Resolution number four two four four, sale of property along West A Street. Uh Director Raka.
All right, this is the same uh parcel that we have discussed uh previously, the previous item. Um over the last year, uh the adjacent property owner to the south has transformed a former residence into a commercial business. And um this business has grown and the need for parking has grown. In fact, they have been using the adjacent city parking or city site for parking. Um this has caused a a violation with the Pasco Municipal Code and working with code enforcement, community development and the property owner. Um it's been determined that uh with the offer to purchase the property, um provide screening and a level of development that would conform to our site development standards here. Uh uh site code violations would be rectified through this purchase and um a a business would be allowed to flourish and have off street parking in service of the needs of our codes. So therefore we bring forth now resolution four two dash, or four two four four, which approves the sale of this property for twelve thousand dollars to the adjacent property owner. At this time, I'll take any questions of council.
Thank you for that. Any questions from council regarding this issue? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I move to approve resolution number four two four four, approving the sale of city owned real property, uh point eight acres al- located along West A Street.
There's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh moved by Mayor Perdama Lonnie and seconded by Councilman Mel. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Same sign. And it passes unanimously. And it looks like we're almost done. Item ten on our agenda, unfinished business. Any unfinished business? None listed. We'll move on to item eleven. New business. None listed. Moving on to item twelve, miscellaneous discussion. City manager.
Good evening again, Mayor and uh council. Um I have some good news and some bad news. The good news is we're gonna forego the executive session tonight. Uh bad news is I have five items for miscellaneous. So I have a couple of questions. So one is the BDI rate increase committee. So uh Director Wurley was notified uh per the contract, uh that BDI uh wished to request a rate increase for twenty twenty three. This is different than the fuel surcharge that was just recently implemented. Uh and it's not necessarily required, but council is historically um, because the rates are associated with the private hauler uh over which council has some control uh due to the contract with the city. Uh has historically appointed a subcommittee supported by staff to discuss proposals from BDI uh with respect to rates and even fuel surcharges. Uh this generally entails, for those who haven't done it, uh generally entails a few meetings with staff, a couple of meetings with staff, a couple of meetings with staff and BDI. Uh to understand the proposal, make uh reasonable adjustments. And so my question tonight is, I think generally we get two from among the council. It's it's a, you know, it's a fun meeting. It's not, you know, it's not uh tense or anything, but uh good learning experience about how they do their rates.
Well, I'll add that I've attended those meetings in the past and they are very short meetings too. So if anyone wishes to volunteer?
I believe Councilmember Alvarado and I served last time. Does anybody else wanna tap in this time? And I would disagree with City Manager Abel's definition of fun.
Darcy will be there.
Depending on when they are, I can make myself available.
We have Councilman Serrano. Anyone else? And Councilman Brown?
We'll work to schedule those.
When they're gonna be, but there's the answer.
We, they're not scheduled yet. So we'll work to schedule those as much as we can to your convenience. So so Chow Trottery, I did wanna kind of uh give council an update on that. We, a couple of you have been kind of following along in the email chain and so you kind of know a little bit uh about what happened, but uh this is specific to prior council direction about the use of ARPA funding to support outdoor seating areas is basically what this is about. Uh this council's kind of heard at length, there's a lot of flexibility when it comes to restaurants and outdoor seating in ARPA and the way the the rules were written uh during the pandemic. And um in this case, we had a downtown event that uh Miss um Ai- 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 Aiela? Suzanne uh was referring to earlier tonight, uh downtown event with a little bit of a cultural uh twist to it. Their request came for assistance to clean an alley to a higher standard for the event, which uh pretty easy to do. Uh Public Works jumped up on that and and uh you heard the result of that. Uh the event has a permit, uh and it's for one time use of the alley. There's also a request for lighting. And uh so we struggled a little bit with some of the initial requests for lighting because they were more of a permanent thing, which could lead to right of way use permits, which we probably need to think about more than a week's time and really kind of put some thought into how uh active, needed right of way, uh like an alley is gonna be also used part time or sometime proceeding. And so we needed to put a little thought into that, but through that process, we kind of developed a bit of a pilot. And today, uh Director uh Buckley had put together uh some documentation very similar to what we've used for other ARPA applicants. And um and we're gonna use this as a pilot and and then evaluate the success and impact of this event. So it kind of gets us a little bit further down the road is what council's trying to do downtown uh with some of the ARPA money and in helping our restaurateurs. And uh maybe help provide, uh guide the development of more permanent uh applications of that money. So are there any questions? Happy to answer those. Other, other thing that came up tonight was the topic of uh listening sessions on the cannabis. Uh that came up uh from council last week. And so we've staff, we've been kicking, kicking around, kind of discussing development of uh listening sessions and planning this event. We're trying to be careful not to represent a council position. Uh as councils aware, this is kind of a fifty fifty issue and we wanna be careful in how we represent uh council's position at this point in time uh with respect to messaging. So I wanted to check in a little bit on a few things before going forward to make sure we meet your expectations. So confirming that feedback on lifting the ban is on retail cannabis only, that potential zones for consideration. And not saying that it would happen, but consideration would be C two, C three, I one, I two, I three. Uh mapping would include the aforementioned zones and other uses that require buffering such as schools and parks and playgrounds and so forth. And uh we're looking at um where areas where we can hit some residential concentrations uh to try to maybe two to three locations in the city. Uh look, probably looking like the latter part of September into early October for three meetings uh and would likely be staff facilitated. Don't see a whole lot of uh need for, this, this is not something we're trying to promote or something we're trying to prevent. It's just facts we're trying to put out and get input from the communities. I don't think the facilitation of this event's particularly tricky. Uh and I just kind of wanted to check in with council on assumptions before uh moving forward and and setting dates and and putting materials together. So any feedback would be welcomed.
Mr. Abel, my my feedback would be, um I think when we're talking, the zones that were under consideration, um unless I'm misunderstanding, what the Broadmoor Zone may or may not um include, I guess I'm not su- sure of the full definition of what that look like. Uh but most of these are primarily east of three ninety five. I'm not sure we'll need to set up three separate listening sessions to cover that. I think that just two would be sufficient. Um I think that the language you're suggesting sounds very neutral, um similar to what we sent out in the survey, which I think was a very neutral intentionally neutral statement. That was not providing any sort of advocacy from the city's perspective. Certainly, I'd I'd be interested in having one in the King City area because that's been separately a suggestion that that's that the um um proposal be limited just to King City. And it'd be important, I think, to listen to that community and hear if they have any objections to that um as part of that. I'm not sure if there's a appropriate facility in that location, but tho- those would be where I'd um I guess my comments, maybe scale down the work just a little bit. I think we can get away with two and uh focus it mostly in this direction. I know that there's a lot of people around the community that are interested, but if if they're really not gonna be affected in their neighborhood, it's it's hard for me to justify a lot of staff time in 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 hearing them other than what we've already heard from. But um welcome to others on that.
Yeah, so I'll completely disagree that I do think there's one needed in that central sixty eight one hundred road corridor. I think uh whether or not there's a a direct uh business impact to these individuals, I think there's certainly questions of whether or not um there's risks of a social impact, whether that's perceived or accurate. So I, I'm opposed to moving forward with two. I would like to see one uh somewhere north of one eighty two in the sixty eight one hundred corridor.
Councilman Campos and then Councilwoman Rich.
I'm gonna have to back uh Councilman Serrano on this one. The la- majority of the comments we got were not in the downtown Pasco area. But yes. And then so the evaluation and then I think we're getting feedback on if that's not the case, then where? And limiting it to the east Pasco area is kind of ag- against the fact and what we heard the people in the chambers telling us. So I think getting a larger sample size does everybody a service.
Um I was gonna say, I I felt like two listening sessions was satisfactory for me. Um I'm not I don't know where they need to take place. I'll leave that up to staff as to where that needs to happen. Um but advertisement of it should be hopefully prolific so that those who wanna participate can. Um and Councilmember Campos, I would say that I feel like I heard something different, which is just interesting. I I felt like I heard a lot of downtown business owners saying they were in favor of it downtown while also hearing those that said they were not. But um staff, I think the the zoning areas that you, city manager that you mentioned, those were the ones that I recall uh us talking about as options. So I would agree with that.
Thank you. Councilman Campos?
I'll just clarify. You're absolutely right. And so my comment, not quite there, but what the opposition that I heard was like a mute yes. It was a yes, but not in downtown. And then there was a bulk of people. It goes back to, again, uh maybe, maybe two is a correct number because I feel like we've already heard from the downtown area and King City would would be the appropriate area. And then as Councilman Serrano said, maybe somewhere out. But you're absolutely right. I did hear a lot of businesses in the downtown area say we were in favor of it. And then those were opposition, were just in opposition of in the downtown area. But resolutely, I heard a yes. That's, that's my comments is right. I just, the the bulk of the message was yes, and then that side part was, but not in my backyard, which was in the downtown area. And a lot of the no's weren't necessarily about marijuana. It was, we just don't want the homeless. So.
Thank you for that. Any further comments? Mr. Brown? Councilman Brown?
Um I think also when we talked about the listening session, it it wa- it was pretty much two. But m- my deal was getting information out there where these meetings was gonna be. So a wide invitation makes more sense to me than having all these meetings. Two meetings, I think is satisfactory, but we really need to reach the city. We really need to advertise this in such a way like never before and make sure that we are being inclusive and we're being transparent. And just nail this thing and be done with it.
Councilman Mel?
Uh yeah, I just wanna also call me. I'm for two meetings, same as what everybody said, uh sixty eight and I know you could put uh advertise, at least put it in your PUD bill because I know everybody looks at that. You have to, so put the flyer in there. At least that'd get people's attention. Um different color maybe on the, on the flyer, uh red or something like that or green from marijuana. I don't know, but uh it does get your attention because I always look at my utility bill, see where they're at and uh so just throwing that out there.
Thank you. Councilman Serrano?
Just one quick question for uh for Mr. White. Um looking at our maps, is the most recent uh zoning map, the October twenty seventeen map, or has it changed significantly since then?
That, no, twenty seventeen is not the most recent zoning map.
Yeah, and so that's, that's one of the things that I struggle with is when we talk about where we're locating this potentially. When I go on our websites, I'm trying to find the best map. Um and I'm seeing one from twenty seventeen. And then one that's, okay, there's a twenty twenty one. Thanks. It just took me a couple of different clicks to find the right information. And I wanna make sure again, as we contemplate where to uh potentially zone this, that's well documented for the public as well as for me. Thank you.
Any further comments?
That was helpful. Thank you. And then one other, one other item there. So uh wanna talk to, to touch on redistricting just a minute. So the item is scheduled for your September twenty sixth workshop. Uh and as council's aware, uh matter of fact, many of you were part of the first election involving our new districts. So it's relatively uh new to Pasco. Uh intuitively, I think that might make us think, well, gee, was it was that recent ago? They probably won't change that much. But one, one thing to kind of keep in mind is that it's something we learned going through the Federal Voter Rights Act last time because we'd used the state process prior, before the State Voter Rights Act. Gets a little complicated. But um the decennial uh US census is the gold standard. And so when we set the districts, council set the districts uh just a few years ago, five, five years ago or so, uh they were set at the two thousand and ten census. So our population at that point in time was just under sixty thousand. Uh we'll be redistricting this cycle uh to the twenty twenty census, which the population's seventy eight thousand, about thirty thousand more, thirty percent more, excuse me. And uh so I, I think it could have an impact on what our districts look like, you know? I've not seen any maps, but I I would guess they're at least gonna be a little wider. A demographic expert that we utilized for our last round, who I I thought just did a great job for us, very skilled, very knowledgeable. Uh he's working on our project. He was available this time, uh working on a lot of projects. Uh we expect the mapping to be complete over the next couple of weeks. Uh as council, at least those that might have been uh watching last time or involved, this very technical work uh doesn't really transfer well verbally in presentations. You you really need the the maps and the uh charts and so forth to kind of demonstrate. Uh so it makes a road show kind of tough, I guess, is what I'm and we kind of came to that conclusion last time. It it just doesn't really translate that well outside of chambers. And anybody watching online would not really be able to pick up that information if we had a remote site. So uh I think like last time, our our recommendation is probably gonna be that we do the public hearings and meetings uh on districting within the chambers here, where we have the technology to get that information out uh so everybody at home can see it as well. Again, we expect to be on the twenty sixth of September. We have a deadline of mid November to adopt a new to adopt the new council district boundary. So wanted to just share that information with you and and get you thinking about that. We got a lot on our plate and this is a pretty important one too. So thank you.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Abel, on that last item, um is the expectation that we'll get one map presented or some alternative maps that all may meet the uh requirements? Um I know we're still, I don't believe we're still under a court order. Um I think Yakma might still be under court order. But um do, is there a, is there a check in with a judge that we have to do here? Can can you help me understand the or do I need to wait for that that next meeting?
Yeah, no, so that, that's a great question. So uh we started this process, uh you, some of you may recall, we actually started this process this time last year. Uh we hired a law firm, uh the uh there, there was some changeover uh from the attorney that we used last time. Uh the the same firm uh has taken on our, our case uh or our, our matter as well. Um and so we've been working with them. Uh we uh started the mapping process in April. Um and with the demographer, uh we were able to use uh IT staff, uh did a great job of working and interfacing uh with them. Uh getting him that information so that he could update these uh these maps. Uh we've been in contact with uh the, the law firm in Seattle uh about uh their being in contact and getting these maps. So uh they've all been uh paid for, uh they've all, the, the work's been done. Uh at this point, uh we're really just waiting to uh get the update. So I don't know what that, what form that will be in in terms of I just spoke to the uh the lead attorney last week and uh he referred to uh getting those maps to us uh as soon as possible. So uh but it it's been really interesting because it's uh, this has really been something that labor, uh the labor shortage has really been affecting because um there's, you have two things. You have a massive uh kind of uh demand for this because of all that's gone on nationally. Then you have a supply problem uh for the labor. So um uh fortunately, we got, we got in early and so it looks like we'll, we'll uh we'll be ahead of the curve uh than than some folks, uh but it is taking longer than we'd hoped. Um but the, the threshold question, uh to answer your question uh was, uh do we need to go back and get a mother may I from our, our friends at uh the subtle district court? Uh and so they reviewed the consent decree and the order that was issued and uh there was no requirement for us to go back uh in in that scenario. So um we were fortunate to not have to go through that process again, but uh again, it it feels like um uh we've been at this a long time and we're uh, we're still coming down to the wire. I mean, two months is pretty quick. So um but yeah, good news is we, we've already got the maps done. The work's been done. We just need to uh get it back to you and and start chewing on it.
Great. Thank you very much. Great, thank you very much.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, we, um, move on to item thirteen, executive session. You just stated there's no need for an executive session. So it is now nine thirty and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone for joining us this evening.